The red and the greens. And last week, we actually made adjustments where we decreased the countywide levy by one penny and rural basic levy by one penny. Basically, it's done through a reduction in building services budget, sixty-five thousand, one seventy-eight. So, our worst-case scenario, we're still up ten cents countywide, and we're down thirty-three cents on rural basic, on incorporated levies. Not rural basic, that's countywide plus rural basic. So township levies are down thirty-three cents, and countywide are up ten cents. But it'll be reduced significantly before we're done. Hopefully. Any questions? I did include, back behind the colored pages, I had a report, running calorie report, we've actually reduced taxes since we started the process here by, be the last page there. We reduced it by three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, eight-thirty-eight. So, we're keeping a running total there, and we're keeping a running total on tax asking by fund. So, you have the tax rates, the tax asking is by fund, and then the, all summarized on the back pages. So, we're making progress, but there's progress to be made yet. Move on.
Question? Okay, thanks, Don.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Before we move on, I'd like to make a motion to move item fourteen under juvenile detention between items E and F on today's budget review discussion for FY twenty-nineteen.
I will second that. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Is there any objections, discussion?
So, we're taking it out of the regular agenda, just moved into the budget hearing?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just as a point of clarification, one of the reasons is that item F has to do with a potential presupposition that that item may be something that the board will take up at some point, and so it's related in that manner.
Is that possible, since that's technically under a different meeting agenda?
We ran it past Pat, and I believe, since it's an informational item, that he didn't have any objection.
And Josh.
Okay.
Yeah, it was an information item, it's not an action item, and it's not on a time, so.
Sounds good, then.
I talked to him previously.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Passes to move the agenda item, thank you. Budget review, Veterans Affairs, page three to five. Any opening remarks, or?
I can just speak to what I have brought with me. On the allocation, it was cut for this fiscal year from ten thousand to ninety-five-seventy-five. And the proposal for this year is to cut it by another hundred dollars. I emailed the legislators to request that they fund that completely back to the ten thousand, but it's not been voted on yet, so we won't know until after the budget's done.
Okay. Yes, sir.
That's the second item, number two, so we probably should stay with administration first.
Okay.
Which had a decrease, and that's including the wage adjustments and the health insurance increases and IFRS.
Okay.
So, it can address the administration side.
The only thing I had on that was just the increases that I asked for are related to education, so to try to make sure that we have enough in the budget for the proper education for both the service officers and the commissioners. But I did reduce the meal expense because we weren't using all of it. I worry about what it costs when we go to a national conference, but since we haven't been using it, then I thought we should go ahead and cut it.
You plan to keep attending those conferences?
Yes, sir.
At least in, if not every time?
Yes, we have to be accredited, so we have to get our CEUs to keep that accreditation.
Overall, it's a net decrease?
Yes, for the administrative side.
I'd move to receive, unless?
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Okay, IDVA grant, page seven.
That's the one she just explained.
No, no action needed on it, it's just, they vote on it each year, so we don't know if we're going to get it or what amount of it we're going to get until after.
Are all counties taking this? All counties are still waiting for this same answer?
Yes, yep.
What do you typically spend that on, then, Danielle?
We spend it on education and outreach, marketing, try to get the word out about our office. It's really the only way we can do anything extra as far as letting people know about our office, and that's basically what I told the legislators, was that we do things with that money we wouldn't be able to do without it, so hopefully they'll vote for it.
I'd move to receive.
I will second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Assistance, page eight.
So, the amounts that I requested for assistance were based on our fiscal year seventeen The numbers that you have for fiscal year eighteen, I guess Dennis can speak to it, but that's the amount that we had before the amendment. So, the requested amount, that forty-seven-nine is five thousand nine hundred more than the total for last fiscal year.
We haven't amended eighteen yet. We amended seventeen, seventeen only shows the actuals, eighteen, actual appropriations have not been amended yet. Potentially, it could be.
Where are we, six months year-to-date, if you pull that up?
I go by each line. I can't go by grand total, I have ability, but I go by each line.
Okay.
First one, we have spent nothing.
Okay.
L service assistance. And she can probably explain this, we have spent some in the past, but not a lot.
Okay, keep going, please.
Next one is thirty-three-twenty, which is provisions, we are at two thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars as of today. Does not include today's checks you're going to prove.
Okay.
Next one, here, five thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, that is rent payments. Thirty-four-ten is utility assistance, here at one thousand two eighty, one thousand two And transportation, you are at five hundred and sixteen dollars. And funeral expense, you are at five thousand currently. Funeral's around a thousand dollars, so they've had five thousand, five of them at a thousand dollars. Thank goodness you had that five thousand.
No, the thousand dollars is the maximum amount for a direct cremation. If it's a burial, the maximum amount is two thousand dollars, but we haven't had any of those so far this fiscal year. The funerals is obviously the hardest part to know what we're going to have.
So, we had received letters on, from funeral homes on funeral expenses, does that fall under this category too, or is that just under?
I think that's generalities. They're addressing the whole situation, I think it was one last year, too, but.
Does that have to do with the veterans ones, though, or is that just for the county?
I'm not sure on that. I think it's just a generic letter to the board saying that prices, their costs are going up.
Yeah, we've been contacted by all the funeral homes, saying the same thing, that they can't really do it for what we allow. The only thing I've done so far is to try to get the city to make an exception for a vault, because right now, community action isn't required to have a vault in the spaces they have, and it's the same cemetery as where our spaces are. So, that would save effectively four hundred dollars for each one, for the funeral homes, if they used our plots. I was hoping that four hundred would be enough to satisfy them for now, but whether or not we change our amount is basically up to the commission. I'm sorry, I should have said Chairman, if you have any questions for him.
I'd just make two, maybe two recommendations, looking at this. It looks like we're looking at FY seventeen, which is, over the last three years, seems like it's our worst-case scenario. But on average, it looks like we're on pace for, and rent payment assistance to be at about twelve thousand, and with funeral services to be at maybe ten thousand, so I would recommend we go on thirty-nine-oh-one for funeral services to seventeen thousand, and that would be at the same amount that we had in our worst of the three years in FY seventeen. And then, in thirty-four-oh-one on rent payment assistance, to go down to sixteen thousand. And again, three-year average, we'd be still more healthy than that, and more than we're on pace for. So, that's about a five thousand dollar total reduction, which puts us roughly at where we were in FY seventeen, with the caveat that there's no way, if you have any instance, that this board's not going to make whole any funeral payment or any rent assistance. So, that would be my recommendation.
So, you'd be taking five thousand out of their total?
Right.
Yeah, rent payment goes down to sixteen, and funeral service down to seventeen.
Right.
If you're moving it, I'll second it.
Okay, I am.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig, to reduce the assistance general basic by five thousand. Any other comments or questions?
Just a comment, thank you very much for being here and for all that you do, really appreciate your service, and yours as well, Danielle.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. Hopefully, the next one will be just as easy. County Sheriff.
You got to take your coat off? Uh-oh.
Go ahead and move it.
Should approve? There is one correction here, Jennifer talked about, on overtime, on the first budget review, you know, it went from sixty thousand up to ninety-four thousand. Thirty-one thousand and ninety-four should have been over in the overtime on investigations. Yep, that'd be sixty-three, two hundred, and then thirty-one thousand over on the next page, on overtime. The two balance out, the totals equals, just diversify it to the two departments. And there'll be some other stuff, I think when we get into that jail part, there was additional correctional officers figured in, because we figured this in September before we decided to reroute that, so there'll be some dollars you can take out. So, first, the first budget, uniform patrol basis wages. However you want to go about it, I am.
I am good, I could tell you this, if you want, we just go over a few things why, or we can just go through. However you want to do it.
Any preference?
You can go through the highlights.
I could just highlight.
However you want to do it.
Okay, I just highlight a few things. The overtime increase was mainly because of a dollar wage increase when the unions bargained, be some of that. In-car camera system, we had to update because it was, I'm going to guess, it went way past its life.
Yeah, it's, our L3 in-car camera system is, in its upcoming, it's eighth year, where we've been using for seven years, so we're at a point now where our servers are full, so we're going to go after, go through an upgrade, go from a two-terabyte server to a ten-terabyte server, replace all the Wi-Fi connections for it, everything that's internal here, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar pre-serve.
You want him to do the highlights when he gets to that particular department, because this department does not have that either. Let's just stay with the department doing it.
However you want to.
And the board.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, you highlight it when we come to that department.
We got that highlighted, too. We got that covered, so we're good. We got that covered. Tell me, patrol?
So, I just have a quick question. Sure. So, on ten nineteen, if I'm on the right one?
Yes.
So, overtime-wise, where are we right now, fiscal year-to-date?
You're almost at thirty thousand.
Okay. So, if I, and I'm a simple guy, obviously, but if I plus that up, times where we could be at, at the end of the year, it'd be at about sixty, and it looks like we're at roughly sixty-two before forty-five, but we go to ninety-four, is that increased? No, is that, am I screwing this up?
This is one of that's saving thirty-one thousand out and putting in investigations.
Yep, got it.
And it's here today, right now, thirty-nine thousand, nine-thirty-nine.
Okay.
Which bases seven months. So, we're pretty much right on target.
Okay, got it, thank you.
How much out of that one?
Thirty-one.
Yeah, I know, they're going to go to the next page, but.
No, yeah.
Thirty-one thousand should have come out of that, going into.
Okay, so you're going to go down to sixty-three, too, then?
Got it.
Okay.
Now, it makes sense to me.
Yep.
Thank you. And allowances get spent, it looks like you've spent it every year, so those will get spent eventually, or they're allocated one time, or somewhere in that latter half of the year, normally?
Right, that's uniform allowance.
Okay.
It is spent.
Got it, got it.
This was printed in four.
Yeah, it gets.
What do you add on that, Dennis?
In December, it comes out.
Okay.
You just do that once a year?
Yes, December.
Everybody gets it with the sheriff, I'd just like to know that.
That's what the one percent covers.
But I maintain.
Wow, you're opening that can of worms, really.
All right, then, are we at invest? Are we done on that?
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. Invest, page six.
That is where you'll see, should be there, thirty-one thousand, two hundred for the overtime.
Overtime for ten nineteen.
To give you an update on that, twenty-two thousand, eight-fifty-one right now.
So, thirty-one, eight-fifty-one right now?
Twenty-two, eight-fifty-one.
Twenty-two, eight-fifty-one.
They're actually spent more in that line item than they got budgeted.
So, crime doesn't always happen on straight times, is that what you're saying?
Right, not only that, but you need to remember, too, that a lot of the holidays came out of there, too, so we've only got one holiday left this year, right? That's why we had asked some time back, we get the holiday out of the overtime line item, so it's.
Do fact that's get holidays?
Yeah.
I'll move to receive this, unless?
Second.
More discussion.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes five-zero. Drug Task Force, page eight.
Really not much there, other than the feds paid the overtime for our deputy that's assigned to that unit.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig, to accept. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five-zero. For Correctional Facility, LEC, page ten to twelve. Isn't it?
I have nine, revenue.
Yes. Should I start on ten? Page ten.
Ten, okay.
And this is the one where we'll be back on that ten-sixteen line item, the wages supervised, supervisor, organized, they went from two to eighty-eight to five-thirty-five. We're not sure.
Dennis, we've discussed.
Is that where you added sergeants?
That shouldn't have been.
I was going to say, you're paying them well.
Yeah, that's what I said, somebody's doing really well. We're not sure where that came from. Two-eighty-eight, we know this, that by adding those sergeants, the acting sergeant pay was washed, and that went to the sergeant pay, but I think we were five thousand short.
Yeah, we do need, we do need the zero out, ten-twenty-three, though.
Right.
That should be zero.
Yeah.
So, you won't have?
See, this stuff was all figured before.
Yeah, we did ours in September, and all this happened.
So, you won't have any acting sergeant pay then with the increases?
No, that should be, ten-twenty-three should be zero.
That's eleven thousand, nine-sixty minus.
But somehow, we need to.
So, what is ten-sixteen supposed to be?
Yeah, it's.
You got two-eighty-eight, plus what, six, how, did you add employees, how many?
No.
So, you just got to add the increase, which is what, three, six percent?
I had it figured out that we were about five, six thousand dollars short, about eighteen thousand dollars total, but we're going to take the line item from jail acting sergeants, move it in there, and then, we're always so short hiring people, that that money would be made up, just because we're not paying payroll, we always seem to be down one or two people up there.
So, put it at about three-oh-six, six hundred?
Yeah.
So, another three percent on that, so another nine thousand, so you're about thirty-one, about three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand-ish?
Estimation.
Yeah, I mean, that's all you can do.
Okay, when she actually plugged these in, current year has five people in this, in this category, this year, they got nine, next year, there's, there's four people increase. What we can do, if the board be all right with this, we can come back next week and break this down to who the people are, name by name.
Well, I think I have an explanation, because you took everything and moved it there, right?
So, there should have been a reduction for the, for the correctional officer.
Ten-fourteen?
Correct, organized employees, there should have, deduction, that amount should have come out of there.
There was a reduction of about, looks like four, plus.
About ninety thousand.
I don't know.
Well, because it looks like we're on pace for, at least at this time, do you know where we're at fiscal year-to-date on ten-fourteen?
Do you see what I'm saying? There were so many different changes between departments and divisions, you know, without looking name by name and where they were before and where they are. For example, ten-sixteen, I think, Alieth was in that last year, and he's, or he was not in it last year, but he is this year in this budget, so that accounts for one individual. I had about twenty minutes notice to look, so I haven't been able to really look in depth to compare last year's budget.
But I think that explains where the five-thirty-five came from. The amount went into ten-sixteen, but didn't come out of ten-fourteen.
It had about.
There's a bigger increase and there's a decrease.
Because we have it by individual, not by.
Right, yeah. So, you have to move them in.
We put in all the unfilled positions to account for the unfilled positions, you know, so all the individuals in positions should be.
But what I, but I think what happened is, is the, that amount didn't come out of ten-fourteen. Those five, those four people didn't come out of ten-fourteen, their whole amount, not just the difference in their pay from a CEO to a sergeant, everything didn't come out of ten-fourteen.
Well, if that's the case, then, it'd show up in both areas, because if it shows up in ten-sixteen, and then her figure shows the same people over here, that can't happen. We need, we need to go back and look at those two lines, and go person by person, and we come back next week with an explanation, and hopefully, it's a decrease.
Should, I mean, we never added anybody.
No, I didn't do bodies. I didn't see our decreases anywhere else to compensate it, so it's got to be between those two, and we shall not get together and get that back, or next week.
I'd move to table, this division, until next week.
Item two B four?
It's explainable.
Correct.
I will second that. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, to table, item two B four on the correctional facility. LEC, correct? Yes.
Would that be defer? I mean, by the rules, isn't tabling, taking it up later in the meeting, and defer?
I've got it postponed.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
And he's got the pen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is deferred. Item B five, administration, page fourteen.
I was just going to ask, we're deferring this whole thing?
The whole thing, then?
No.
The one by one?
Okay.
Department vision, yeah.
It's, are you looking at page fourteen?
Yes, sir.
There's really not a whole lot of difference in there, looking at, some missing. Car allowance, no. Gas and oil, we pretty much stayed right on target last year. That's it.
What are our actuals on the gas, oil this year?
Right now, well.
Unless he's got a more up to.
Twenty-five-oh-one, Dennis.
Which one?
Twenty-five-oh-one.
Gas and oil.
You're at sixty-two thousand, seven-oh-two.
I just always figure there's an increase there almost every year, but.
You know, we kind of, we stayed pretty, we stayed pretty close.
Yep.
Sixteen to seventeen, one town fifty.
The gas prices, way up on sixteen, and then they came down. Actually, fifty, yeah.
Other than that, though, not seen anything that's jumping out.
This might be like cell phone expenses, where you're getting the telephone, communication, all that.
Been jumped a little bit.
Six miles of dollars.
We don't have cell phones.
Forty-one. Those are our air cards, actually, for computers, and we have added a few computers, which has caused us to have to add air cards, and that, that cost has gone up a little bit, our mobile data units in our cars.
Mr. Chair.
So, the, the, what is that, forty-four sixty radio and related equipment, that's lighting in the vehicles, is that correct?
Yeah, that could be, that could be anything from lighting to, related, any kind of related equipment cameras. related, any kind of related equipment cameras.
This is back to when you started explaining your car cameras?
Yeah.
You updated this where this-
Okay, that's where that's at, okay.
What's the- Oh, it's fine. What's the background on the car allowance? I've seen that in a couple divisions, zeroed out last couple of years.
Which one, which number?
Eleven thirty-five. Car allowance, eleven thirty-five. What's the background on, on that?
Once upon a time, I think the sheriff did get a car allowance, but we don't get allowances on anymore, so that line could actually disappear.
Well, right, that's what I was getting at. You know, last year we discussed if it's three years without the cost, then you would remove it. So are you doing that as we go through these, Dennis?
I'm gonna go through, oh, except payroll, the payroll items, I have to leave because I might use them at some point. But anything like this, or any other lines, there are zeros across this page here, I'll go and delete them all.
Okay, thank you.
I just said-
Twenty-nine thirty-five, I'm asking for a small increase there, the cost of ammunition as well.
Doesn't have to.
Wearing in safety apparel went up. Not really.
No.
The lighting equipment, because we experienced deputy involved shooting, and when his lights were on and he was in that shootout, it was reflected. He was blinded by the lights because it was reflecting. So they have new lights now that dim, so, um, we decided we better go that route.
Learned that from expensive-
You wanna blind them, not us.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Our deputy was blinded when he stepped back.
Yeah.
Uh, canine costs, twenty-nine sixty-five, we're asking for an increase there. Uh, we used to get help from different places, donated dog food and so forth, and that's gone away now, and you can see what we spent already this year. So we're asking for an increase there. That also is medical costs for the dog, vet care, so it's pretty reasonable.
The one thing that would be an advantage there for your note is, our guys pay for their own canine. So they have buy-in on that. When you pay for it yourself and you're gonna make sure that it gets trained and stay up with it, something the county's known for years, I think it's probably a smart way of doing it.
So twenty-nine, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, twenty-nine sixty-five includes training?
No, it's, uh, cost is just the care of the dog.
Just the care, okay.
Yes, it does.
How many do you have now?
Six.
Six. You guys have a waiting list on canine requests or?
You know, we have a guy that's interested and it's up to him to move forward. We're not gonna hold that back because, you know, it's his partner out there and helps a long ways away, so we invite those that wanna do it. It's a, it's a true advantage for us.
Is this still open to anyone in patrol can have a canine?
Yep, yep.
But that means that, Marty, they gotta, like, the sheriffs, they buy their own dog, or you buy a dog. And then you're trained in it, if it doesn't work, if it doesn't certify, you know, so that's where you get your buy-in.
The dog's still around ten thousand, or are they more, or?
If you get a puppy, they're cheaper, but then you run the cost and it's not working out. If you buy a one-year-old dog, it's gonna be ten fifty, no, uh.
Do you know the cost, Sheriff of the in-car camera system?
Todd.
Or Todd?
I'm sorry, I was reading.
Do you know the cost of the in-car camera system?
That, the upgrade that we're gonna go through?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
I've already, I've already got, uh, an estimate from L three.
Is that something, Dennis, that we would normally do through CIP project or through operational budget?
We're done radios, we're probably under security equipment on CIP. Is this pretty much one time? It's about every seven or eight years.
And it's, it's supposed to be five. We've, we've made this system, we've got right now last seven, but they recommend every five, every five years an upgrade.
CIP, we usually borrow when the life of the, whatever we're doing, that the borrowing doesn't exceed the life. So if the life's seven years, we borrow for five years. In a lot of cases now, we're going ten years. So if it's on a borderline, we should really keep it here or do a CIP.
What have you done in the past with this or?
This is, this is the first, so seven years ago was the first time we went with the, the current, the current system.
But you did it out of your norm on, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Forty-four seventy-five, they spent thirteen thousand seven seventy-seven, maintenance contract. I think that probably should really been at forty-four seventy-eight. Cause you have zero budget, zero for next year. You got six three thousand, sixty-three thousand. I think it's a line possibly, and I'll talk with Jennifer, but that could, thirteen seventy-seven belongs in forty-four seventy-eight.
Yes.
Okay, then, we give it, we'll get that transferred over then.
Okay. Is that one that you would remove as well, or is there anything?
No, because sure back in sixteen, we got eight thousand seventy-three dollars spent. Once that's gone, next fiscal year, nineteen twenty, we're going.
With contractual services?
No, it's explainables. They had no listed amount here.
Contractual, it could be, uh, maintenance contracts for different equipment that we've got, like our L three system would have. I mean, what else are?
Body cameras.
Body cameras, um, our, some of our office equipment. Pardon me? Yeah, insurance for the mobile command unit. Um, we've got two re-copy machines that have maintenance contracts on. What about the fingerprint machine that come over there? The fingerprint machine comes out of there, um, our, the computer, the big one, nineteen thousand eight. The beast? Yeah, the beast.
Beast is our identification system as a maintenance contract.
But that's all being rolled into forty-four seventy-eight now?
Right. Yeah, we've got different contracts, maintenance contracts, basically that's contractual services.
How much would it cost to replace a beast if, or to go out?
Our beast system?
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of them.
Yeah.
It's, it's the same system the city uses for their property. It's a computerized system.
Okay, I got you.
Some of our scan parts?
Yeah, we got that through a federal.
Okay.
For the, for most of the cost, the majority of the cost came out of a grant, but we had to replace it. Yeah, we, when we put it in five or six years ago, I think there was well over two hundred thousand dollars at that time, just, just for our agency. I know the city's got the same system, and theirs is much larger, because obviously they've got larger property than we do.
Sure. I was just kinda trying to calculate in my head if it would be cheaper to not do any maintenance contracts and self-insure at sixty-three a year.
We tried some of that and it was, before we got in office, uh, that's kinda how they did it. Man, they, they were getting killed by not having, and we decided we should really have those maintenance contracts.
Well, and there is a benefit to a maintenance contract in that you know that is a set expense every year.
Right.
Whereas-
And it's expensive to have whoever come fix one.
With our maintenance contracts too, like, like our L three system, last, now it's, it's been going for seven years, instead of the recommended five, uh, we make our copy machines last longer with that. The X-ray machine, yeah, that would be more, your X-ray machine up there costs us forty-three thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, I thought we got that donated from the airport.
Worth maintenance contract.
Oh, the contract, okay.
They come calibrate it once a year and make sure it's not.
Sixty-three sixty, could you live with seventy-five hundred rather than ten thousand? I don't know if you had something in-
How much?
Seventy-five hundred? Okay. Well, I just, I wanna make sure you don't get off scot-free without any, any kind of action, I mean, jeez.
I don't think, uh, yeah. Now, the problem was you took some from us last year.
Year before too.
From that carpet, yeah, but I found that.
So you had money in your budget.
I had money to cover, yeah, and I wanted to kill you at the top.
How many vehicles do you buy a year for it out of this line?
Out of this line?
Yeah. You got a hundred eighty thousand?
Just depends, seven, six or seven, just depends what we're, what we're getting.
Do they only cost about the same price as to your court transfer?
Yes, if I've in-
They're basically same cars then?
Right, I've increased, I've asked for an increase in that when we get there and I'll explain why.
Kinda like I say, if they're same cars, why would they go up? That's, that's gonna be my question when you get down there.
Because we're already behind in that line item, and I'll explain why. We've been, we've been behind in that line item for a number of years.
I'd move to receive minus twenty-five hundred.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any other major cuts we wanna make? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Civil Division, page seventeen.
This is all wages, mountain.
Move to receive, second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carries five to zero.
The next one is the governor's traffic safety project. It's grant money that we get to work.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carries five to zero. Crime prevention, twenty-six.
Move to receive.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom.
I, I have a question on the hospitalization, why that one jumped so much more than that on?
On, in twenty-
Crime prevention?
Yeah, it's line one 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 eight?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-one, transport? Okay, I have commissary in there.
We haven't voted on that yet.
Put that in there, cause that's money they get.
Think we need to vote, or?
To vote on that one. Yeah, cause it was moved in second, but then I asked the question.
I think we just need to vote on it.
As is. Yeah, we need to vote yet, but I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, well, cause it, it was a change in insurance plan.
Oh, okay. Are we good?
Now, we're on page twenty-six.
Oh, we gotta vote, yeah.
We had to hold it, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carries five to zero.
Now you go to page twenty-six, commissary fund. And this money is tasked with a specific purpose, which is sheriff or-
Yeah, this is, uh, money that can only be spent for inmate care or anything to do with inside the jail. And that was Secretary of State even, had mentioned that information, so that's, uh, specific, uh, to the jail. For example, we thought maybe you could buy a transport van, but no, you can't. Can't buy a transport van. If I could give them a ride, that was nice, but you can't, you can't use it for that. It can only be used to, like, buy books and-
We buy TVs?
TVs.
Prove them. Mattresses.
Yeah.
High-tech products.
Have to be this dollar amount every year?
Well, the dollar amount that, uh, is what we take in from those inmates.
This is revenue.
Yeah.
And whatever, then, that's why we separate, it's part of the general fund, but we separate a subsidiary fund to keep track of what commissary revenue come in and expenses are separate, so it doesn't get intermingled. Also, if there's money left over to any year, just stays in that fund, carries over, and that's probably part of this fifty thousand is carryover money we estimate, plus new revenue coming in.
There's absolutely no impact on tax?
No impact.
No, all money that the inmates buy a lot of ramen noodles, stuff like that.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom.
Doritos and Mountain Dew.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Are you hungry, Keith? Is that just what you want right now?
It is my birthday, I should get-
Oh, happy birthday to you.
Of course, he sang it to regular media too, he opened a can of worms there.
Oh, yeah. I'll remember that for citizen concerns.
Item ten, we didn't get that, did we?
No, now we're back to that. The court security, courtroom here.
Courtroom security, twenty-one?
Transportation court, court security.
Right.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
So here's where you're saying. And this, the salaries here, and she has an explanation, we'll probably wait till next week, they did have a decrease here, so she found where the money probably went up in jail, where it came to other places. It's still increased, ninety-five thousand, that's your benefits, your step increase and everything else, so it's gonna balance out, but we'll wait till next week so we don't get totally confused.
So this one, we're gonna defer to next week?
No, go ahead and do this one. We don't like decreasing this one now, so you go ahead with this one.
Okay.
That's why their overall budget went down, because they did decrease by about a hundred and thirty thousand, and that's part of moving people around again.
So line ten twenty-three, that's zero now? The acting jail, jail acting sergeants, I'm sorry?
In the jail.
On page twenty-one?
Do they have acting sergeant in the-
Yes.
Ten twenty-three, they would have to have acting sergeant.
Yes, it's part of the cell does.
Oh, transport.
The jail is different.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So when sergeant pilot's not there.
Contractually, they have to.
Okay, that makes sense.
Now here, to answer a question Dennis said earlier, sixty-three fifty. For years, we've had forty thousand, well, seventeen, we had forty, sixteen was an actual, but we can't get cars for, we typically buy two cars out of that line item every year for transport. Uh, we can't get two cars for forty thousand dollars, that's why the increase is there.
We tried the program route, but it seems to not be working, so we went to the squad car.
I can get a car for about twenty-six thousand.
And that comes back to your hundred eighty back there, so you're just getting where it should have been.
Right.
Yep.
So then, on the fuel expense then, are we, let's see, twenty-five oh one? Were you just putting it all in one area before on the actuals, or? Cause it only shows eighty here on the actual, I don't know. Is it just kinda your, like, accounting in one spot and then?
We get a bill once a month for our gas, because everybody puts their gas on a gas card, so we get a bill once a month. And most time I just take that gas out of the-
The first one?
And then when we get down on that and I take-
Take out of this one, okay, and that's kinda what I assumed.
Cause they're, it's all lumped together under one account.
Right.
They're at five thousand eighty right now.
Okay.
So they're pretty much right on target. Going to courthouse security?
I'll move, I'll move to receive that.
Second. Who motion?
Me.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. To receive. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Now we go to item eleven, page twenty-three.
Pretty much all the wages until you get back to the second page on page twenty-four, and that's where you have security equipment for sixty thousand, which we talked about earlier a little bit in the past meetings, where maybe this really should go to CIP, if we're gonna do the cameras, which covers, I think, all three buildings, where if the board wants to go.
But basically you'd move that to the debt levy as opposed to countywide levy?
We may wanna readdress the camera system.
To be cameras inside.
This is where it changes, yes. But I think the amount of money would be the same.
Sure. I'm fine with leaving that here as of now, I mean, I don't know, I think we could maybe fund it with, uh, our one-time funding like, uh-
Your CIPs.
Yeah.
That's something you decide when you get to the last two weeks of when we're down, of where are we, where do we need to go? That's one we'll kinda tag there and make a decision then. And they may have a better idea of what they're gonna need to implement, whatever security they gotta do with new security. That's when we'll kind of tag there and make a decision then, and they may have a better idea of what they're gonna need to implement, whatever security I do with new security.
Protocols here. I'll move to receive it as it is.
Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to make sure that, I'm writing some of these down, but I can lose stuff, that we do tag it and revisit it, because this is one that I think we should, so.
Yep.
That can be somehow reflected.
You got what he meant, right, Pat? You got what he meant by that?
Yep. It's subject to review, once they, once the orders come down, whatever, for the courthouse security, they may have different ideas, they may have to bring back to the board to implement what they gotta do. Yes, it's always subject to review on all these.
That one has a special asterisk, man.
Is there a sense in postponing it until that is known?
Yeah, because it may be more than sixty thousand, maybe less than sixty thousand.
Well, we're just receiving it as it is, and if we make any amendments or changes, we can make those at another time, too.
Because you don't have any idea yet what you have to do.
We're not approving it, we're just receiving it.
Yeah, that's all you're doing. You're an increase or decrease or eliminate, you go either way, till February twenty.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passes four to one, unopposed on item eleven. Uniform Patrol, page twenty-seven.
Over the years, we've transferred uniform patrol deputies from general basing to rural basing. We've been doing this for several years, or some years we haven't done it, this is an option on the board when we get down to the final tally here, whether we want to move one, two, three, or all of them, it's a choice of the board, because it doesn't matter, they basically serve the rural people, so this is, you know, always been a question mark, how many you would over there or how many you don't put over there. But for the time being, this is what's been submitted here, it reflects the current year, so if you want to take some from general basing, move over here, you know, helps the general base increase in the rural base. That's another decision you make down the road, too, February thirteenth or February twenty, if you want to move any at all.
What are your thoughts on it?
Mine, doesn't matter to me, that's yours.
Or Dennis's.
But these can't come in the city limits.
Down the road eventually, some counties do have uniform patrol all in rural basing and in contract with the cities for services, countywide law enforcement, that's a whole different ballgame. Sioux County does it, Ida County does it, I don't know if any other county, I'm sure there's others that do it, but legally, you can put all uniform patrol in rural basing. Doing the one shot is a lot, because we've already moved nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, or still about a million back here in the other fund that we could move, but then, they only serve rural people, and you have to contract with the cities.
That's how Ida does it? Ida County does it that way?
Yep, they have countywide law enforcement.
They have countywide.
Sioux County has countywide, I believe.
Oh, it's because they don't have any big cities there.
No, you're dealing, yeah, that's the big problem, you're dealing with metropolitan city, where Sioux City probably wouldn't contract, because they got their own police force, and you get back to the caucus.
I'll move to receive.
I'll second, and this is another one I'm-
Tagged, yes.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Item thirteen, Sheriff forfeiture non-tax, page twenty-nine.
Rural budget in there, carryover funds, and potentially whatever else they might get, but again, this is a discretion of sheriff to spend easily, they can only spend on certain things.
I'll move to receive. Is this the seizure stuff?
Right, the task force.
Motion by Reddick, second by Potabom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass, those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
So, I was just gonna let you know on the ACH, who we contracted with, they came and told us that there were some leftover dollars in the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fund or whatever it was, I think it was roughly a hundred. So, this leftover there could stay to be used as continual services. Our thoughts, not knowing where you guys are going on the region, you could leave that, and the guy that's in there, Greg Brostad, could contract some continual services for that dollar, though. Might be a real plus, in my thought, he could see more people, it would help, so something to think about. Roughly have around a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in the bank and ring the board, so that's what we saved over the year. If we work on that split that we talked about, looks out pretty good, if we want to continue to let that grow, and you guys get that percentage, however we decide, you guys can really decide that. Under the safety apparel and shields, one of my thoughts and concerns was we don't have ballistic helmets, and we don't have many shields for our guys on patrol in case we come across similar situations at Douglas County, Colorado, where a guy was barricaded and started firing at him. We need to have some more of those pieces of equipment in patrol cars, ready for deployment. We increased our body cameras, so we should, everybody should have one, and that was a little bit, and the in-car system overtime increase was basically because of, you know, they got a raise, so. Other than that, I think we've tried to be good stewards of the money, and we don't really have any overages, do we, Dennis, at the end? No. No, held the line.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Real quick question, and not to get into this whole issue, but that Greg Brostad?
Yeah.
Does he, do you know, generally speaking, how you characterize his position or what he can?
He's a mental health physician, hired to raise ACHs.
Okay.
He sees a lot of our inmates up there, give them initial tests, testing, and he can do some specific evaluations and some outlaws like the IDAP program, which is a battery, real battery program, all that helps, that's a big part of keeping them around.
That's all very helpful as we look forward to the future, so thank you.
He's a real asset for us, and we are working with Department of Corrections, and I think we got our first class coming up here in the near future, and that will help, and the IDAP is part of domestic abuse, and they have to go to class. Problem is, it becomes for many of them, they don't have the money, six-hundred-and-fifty bucks, and then they pay so much a week, and then we, they end up having ten or twelve contempt of courts, so they're back in recycling, we can get Greg to see him, get him in the program. We're willing to waive room and board fee for that, because, hey, you know what, then we don't have to see him revisiting us again, so it's, it's part of that good collaboration we've had with the courts and Department of Corrections and everybody, so it's a real positive for us.
Thank you very much.
Nobody else? Thanks. Not like you're touching on your second one. Oh, I did want to tell you, though, our building at Fur Hill has really far exceeded our expectations, very nice, and when it's all done, we'll have some kind of deal out there forever.
Probably a barbecue.
Well, you might do that.
And we have made our first lease payment, too.
Right.
So, it's all going good.
All right, moving on to Hard Rock Gaming Fees, summary of allocations.
I did give you out a new sheet, because we did a revision here, when you did the lease purchase for the, for the training center. So, in this case here, with our gaming revenues, we decided splitting that between, the lease purchase between local option gaming, we decided to go with gaming revenues for the training center, so you'll notice on the first page, we transfer seventy-four thousand three forty-four next year. That's what we need to cover after we take the hundred-and-fifty initially put in there for the loss of gaming, also a unit donation. That number may fluctuate if we get any other income, if we start renting out somebody, I can limit how far we can rent it, if we run into a episode where it could be a profit, where they have to tax it, so we gotta watch it there.
While we're, I'm sorry, do we have to watch that just while we're leasing it?
Yes.
And after we're done with the lease, that's not, that won't be an issue?
No, they could, if we get too much income coming in, they can turn it over as taxable.
Okay.
Even though the county will own it, city rented that with the airbase quite a few times. So, that's the allocation there, that'll be each year for the next five years. Then we go to second page, and there is information in your packet here, but on meals and wheels, or meals and wheels, so our original transit system, and then we have unobligated, meals and wheels asking a faint dollar amount they got this year. The only reason you have to fund a basis is because nonprofit does generate money, too, from grants, and that's what the boards looked at, the past, current year, and the past, last couple of years, does it generate money? Yes, it does. Cert, same situation there, so the original transit is a multi-county, and that's the same request they have for this year as next year. And that, after all that's done, the meals and wheels, the certs, and also the seventy-five thousand, you still have four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand left that's unobligated, that potentially you can use down the road this budget year for next year to fund like the economic development department, we've done that in the past. Or not in this one, sorry, we did use three-hundred thousand this year to offset taxes in general, so I have not budgeted that this year, because the board has not taken action on that, so we do have four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand gaming revenues that is available yet for uses within this, you know, budgeting process if the board so desires.
Do you need a separate motion on all these, or we can do them all?
You can just do it on, the transfers, you don't have to, because we've already done that, but on the fund of forty-eight-ten, yes, a four-ninety-eight thousand eight ninety-five. That is zero-zero-two, zero-two-two-seven dash four-oh-two dash forty-eight-ten, gaming revenues. And the reason I put in the, we budget that actually unallocated or unobligated, is that way you don't have to come back for a budget amendment, you can just allocate it as you go through the year, or you can do it this year, help offset taxes next year.
You said zero-zero-two or zero-zero-three?
Zero-zero-three.
He said two, that's why I thought I had the wrong page.
Zero-zero-three.
I'll move that, second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom.
This fund and local option fund we'll look at when we get toward the end, where you want to use the money, if you want to use any of the reduced taxes. Yes.
Any other questions for Dennis, or? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carries five to zero.
Okay, now we go to infrastructure, same situation here. We decided, this is gonna take a motion on this one separately, funding soil conservation, thirty-six thousand, I have it transferred out, but it's actually funding the soil conservation allocation that we do to the egg extension, which we've done the past several years. That is thirty-six thousand. In this case here, if we do use it, it'll help reduce our tax asking that's currently there for rural basic. And like I say, we're using it this year, we've used it the past year to help reduce taxes, this is one I propose, continue.
So moved.
I will second, motion by Young, second by DeWitt. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries, and that is only on D-one, correct, huh?
Right.
Okay.
Well, actually, it isn't even on here, it's part of the expenditures. So, it's part of the infrastructure spending, so I want to make a separate motion just on that, is that all right, Pat?
Yeah, which one are you making a separate motion about?
The soil conservation transfer, it's actually allocating, local option to cover the taxes in rural basic for that particular allocation. Okay, now, the next one, we're gonna do D-two through seven. In this case here, you go to next page nine on your sheet here, but next page is the handle I gave you, the first one is the egg center, that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand, before, we're doing seventy-five out of gaming, seventy-five out of local option, we want to make it cleaner, so we're using local option to fund the whole hundred-and-fifty thousand each year for the next ten years. That'll start next fiscal year, I think they're starting, they want to get started this spring, or, you know, before June first, I guess. Sula Initiative, that's the same amount of money they requested this year, they've asked for twenty-five thousand again next year. Western Isle Tourism, five hundred dollars, that's the same amount as this current year and several past years. County Fair is twenty-seven thousand, that's actually two thousand higher than the current year, current year, we give them twenty-five thousand. So, when I go through all these, you go back and make adjustments you want on either one of these. So, continuing, Sula Senior Center Employment Program, ten thousand four seventy-four, that's the same as the current year. Simple improvement in regional housing, that's fourteen thousand eight oh eight, same as this year, and then we have unobligated funds left over, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, that can be used for various things when you get to the end.
That's a fair.
Sure.
Dennis, our folks from the Woodbury County Fair scheduled to come to the board at any time, I just remember in the past, they-
Uh, we, I believe we contacted the board office.
Oh, very good.
Gentlemen, you are for the fair?
Is there?
Oh, we contacted everybody.
Would we like to hear from?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, nice to see you again once you're here at least, a pleasure to be up here. I sent your information packets up probably a month ago and explained what we have done in the past, go ahead.
Just for the record, what's your name, please?
Randy Hayworth.
Randy Hayworth, thank you.
Last name, H-A-Y-W-O-R-T-H. I sent you our financials, and I sent you our entries that we had, we were up in all entries, livestock, open class, and then I, subsequent to that, received from the state, where they get all the information, and the state overall is down, we're up about two percent. So, what we're doing so far seems to be working and keeping the agricultural committee kind of restocked for the future generations, and I sent you some information of a gentleman, Baxter Black, I don't know if you've ever heard it or remember reading it when I sent it to you, but it talks about for every hundred people that get put out and get doctors and attorneys and lawyers and whatever we have, we're gonna need to have at least two people trained to be able to feed just that part of our community, and not, not including the rest of the world, which we feed a lot now. So, we feel that we're doing a real service. We're getting bigger, and we're kind of constrained by our limitations about where our acreage is, there isn't really anything available in the area, that's something we're keeping an eye to the future on, but we've always treasured the input that you've had and the assistance that we've given to the fair in the past and look forward to the continued cooperation. We have a great relationship with the sheriff, we saw him here, got to talk to him, we let him, we, I shouldn't say we let them, they asked and we allowed that, to train their dogs, do some training exercises down there. We have some deputies that are getting married this year, and they're coming down to have their events at the fairgrounds, which we're pleased to have them, so we feel a real integral part of the community, and just like to say thank you for whatever support you deem necessary to give to us. Any questions?
Mr. Taylor?
No.
This one's is deafening.
Just appreciative of what y'all do.
Well, we really enjoy working with the kids, and we're fortunate that we are growing, and a lot of the county fairs in our immediate area can't always say the same. So, I like doing it with the kids, being with the kids, and there's some people I only get to see once a year, like yourself, and because of the fair, and there are other kids I only get to see once a year, and that's during the fair.
I just have a question, did you get much feedback on the potential to have alcohol at the fair?
My cousin just asked me that same question.
He's a reporter.
Well, yes, he is. He's also my cousin, but-
We won't hold that against you.
Some places it works to my benefit. But, subsequent to the vote, and it was a kind of resounding no to incorporate alcohol at the fair, I never had one person come up to me subsequent to that and say, darn it, why didn't you, you should have done this, it was all like, we're glad you didn't, so glad you didn't include alcohol. Sixty-six percent of the counties in Iowa are doing it now, and I talked to a gentleman from, I believe it was Sack County, last Tuesday, we had a little meeting. They say they couldn't put on their fair without having beer sales, and I, I know it's a potential income source for us to really get on, and we can't really go to Budweiser or Glazier if we aren't selling their product, it doesn't really benefit them from a business standpoint. Yes, you could argue it's kind of a service to the community, but so far, I haven't had anybody, other than a few board members who wanted to do it, say that they're, they're disappointed, put it that way. I think it's something that will eventually come. I kind of hope that I'm not there for that. I kind of hope that I'm not there for that.
So it almost sounds like they weren't in favor of the alcohol so much as it were their revenue.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's another issue. There's a place that's traditionally been a restaurant for the Methodist food, or the Methodist church there in Mobile, and they gave up their rights to that a couple of years ago because their constituency is getting a lot older and they can't staff it for five days, you know, 12 hours. So they gave it over to a local restaurateur. She's pulling out of it this year, so that particular building, as of this time, is not spoken for, and some people are already saying, oh, we should put a beer garden in there. I think, good luck with that.
Well, I appreciate the fair board and what you do, and, you know, in that instance, not selling out, so to speak, and keep up the good work.
Well, thank you very much, and we always encourage you to come down, and even incognito if you want to look around and see what we're doing.
Thank you.
So of all of these, there's essentially no increase, Dennis, is that correct?
Correct.
So I just have one more. I think we have a representative of the Regional Housing Trust Fund, so if she's able to give us a little update, we appreciate what you do as well.
I'm Amanda Harper with Simcoe, Sulan Interstate Metropolitan Planning Council. I'm the housing specialist there, and I've been there for just over a year now, and things are going really well. For Woodbury County, with our last grant round, we spent just under $55,000, and that includes the 12,000 match that we got from you last time. The match request this time is a little bit higher, actually. It's just over 2,000 higher because we're moving to that new allocation that we talked about last time I was here, probably in November, I think. And I expect it to go down again next year, just because the monies we're getting from IFA are going to be less, so then your match in accordance with that will be less. The communities that we worked in, we're in Mobile, Sloan, and we're just finishing up and pushing right now. So, any questions for me? Matthew, I'd like to thank you for being with us for the last year, and your input has been valuable and learned some lessons from you, whether you believe me or not. And I think Keith, you're coming next, this year, so I'll see you maybe on Thursday. Hey, bring a lunch if you're hungry, because we're not serving lunch anymore.
Oh. Not even, not even.
He's always got a bag of chips, so don't worry.
Well, we've got such a tight ship running that our meetings have really just shortened, so thanks to Matthew, we're down to about 30-minute meetings.
Thank you for the kind words. In exchange, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Taylor.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
You too.
And this is for the package, right, 2 through 7?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Carries five zero. Thank you. Debt Service Fund.
Okay, in this fund here, our actual tax asking is going down 698,000. The reason for that is we had a shift in our funding for county services this current year, and we took the money that we're saving there, applied it to our debt service. We're paying off one debt this year on a regular cycle, and we're paying off another debt a year early, which was CIP, and then we're paying the second debt off two years early, which was our new road we put down by CF. I think it's 240th. We built that little hook around there, so that is paid off. So we have paid off three loans programmed in this that's included in this decrease. There's also capital loan note this year, potentially of 1,692,000. That's for expenses we're making this year before May. That may still change. You know, we're shifting CIP around a little bit in '17, so that is included in there. Because what we borrowed next year, or this year, we can pay next year, then the fiscal '18 that we're doing, fiscal year '18 CIP, we borrowed the following year. So our '17, '18, or '16, '17, yeah, '17, '18 is 1,692. That's included in our decrease, so again, we're decreasing 698,000. Our total debt will be 8,888,000 with this 1,6 added in, which is rather small compared to what we could borrow.
What was the total? Eight million what?
Eight million 888,888,327, which includes a million six. I thought it hadn't turned on. It will be now.
Hopefully, that wasn't a debt collector.
Well, it was restricted, so probably the sheriff called me already.
I'd move it.
I will second the motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions for Dennis? Or anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero. At this point, we are moving, we're all done, right, Dennis?
Uh, we have one more, which would be the paramedics, but first, you're going to do juvenile detention.
Right.
Item 14 of the regular agenda.
Is getting moved up to in front of F. Right, so, Mr. Weber.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. It was probably three months ago I sat in front of all of you and did a lot of talking and told you guys a lot of stuff you didn't know, made you guys a lot of promises, and one of those promises was that I could probably save you $250,000 in the next fiscal year. I think it's time for me follow through. I sat here in the meeting when Mr. Brown was here initially, looking for these paramedic positions, and I thought to myself, we need to get this fast track going of my restructuring. I've talked to my liaisons. They're in agreement with me. I have in front of you an informational item that will get rid of two positions. I didn't want this to be a surprise, but during my budget review, I plan on eliminating these two positions, not budgeting for them, and hoping that you will deauthorize the positions. You have there, the one position will be teen court, mental health coordinator, and the other position is one assistant director position, which was held by me when I was promoted. I've already divvied up the duties for the assistant director position. I've kept most of them, which was an easy transition for me, and I've done my due diligence and resource, research, and I believe eliminating the teen court mental health coordinator position will not provide any lack of services for the county detention court system. We are the only county in Iowa, I believe, that does have a mental health coordinator for juveniles, and most counties have shifted out diversion programs, and the state seems to be funding these programs from now on. The state likes them because it saves the state a lot of money, but it's at the county taxpayer expense, so I believe those type of programs should be shifted back to the state. I wanted to give you some time and a heads up before the budget meeting for my plan, in case you had any questions or wanted to do some research, or anyone else wanted to speak on the matter. So I think February 6th, I'll be back here, and that'll be my, my plan moving forward. The third part of my plan will get me up past the $250,000 mark, but for the time being, I would like to see this go forth. Do you guys have any questions about it?
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Ryan, do you, of the two affected particular employees, do you have any plans to use them elsewhere in the department, or at this point, no?
Um, at this point, one of them, the position's vacant, and the second position, due to union contract, will be eligible to bump out the least senior worker at the detention center and still be employed.
Okay.
The logistics of that, we kind of had a, we have a disagreement. We're still kind of getting in the fine print of the contract to see exactly how that'll play out, but they will have other employment with the county.
Sir. All right, and just a comment. I want to commend you for, yeah, for the reorganization idea, the effort, and I think as we've generally stated, if a department head or an elected official comes to us and says, here's how I can function as efficiently, and we even provide the counterweight to say, are you sure? Because we're going to take your recommendation, you live and breathe it, breathe it every day, at savings to taxpayers, who are we to argue? So I'm appreciative for that, and that you're also not just eliminating, but that you're also reorganizing some of the duties there. So I don't think that this is too far afield of what we've done with the assistant HR director, so to speak, with that position, deauthorizing what we've done. I know we have a building services reorganization, and with economic development and planning and zoning. I think it's the hardest work, but it's very, very good work to be done, so I commend you for it and appreciate it.
So are we going to be getting rid of the teen court?
Yeah.
Completely?
Yes.
Okay, are we hoping to save that through state funding or something later, or just say we don't want it anymore?
We don't provide any other diversion programs besides teen court at this point, juvenile court services, and the state provides all the diversion programs, so that would be the only program we're providing.
Okay, but you don't think they would pick that up, then?
Oh, I think someone will pick it up. I mean, most of the programs still are run by volunteers or people in the community, like Sandberg Centers or Boys and Girls Homes or things like that. We're the only one that the county's actually putting the bill for.
And that's why I was asking, because that's one of the things we brag about, that that's one of our success stories is our teen court, but, and I don't see the state jumping up to say we want to fund more things.
I just believe, I mean, when you look at the bigger picture, what the county is responsible for, and I think of paramedics, I think of sheriff's department, I think of juvenile detention, I just, in my observations, the teen court is, is very successful at what it does, but it seems like those types of things should be taken care of. I mean, that happened, they took care of that in my school when I was young, you know, kids getting in fights and kids stealing from classes and, and you know, or the juvenile court services just kicked it out and let parents deal with it, you know? It just seems like it's too small of a, a branch for the county to spend money on, and I don't, I don't think the, the successes necessarily correlate to success, you know?
Part of my best career, of my police career, was my years as the liaison officer, and I wish we'd had a teen court then, because if you save a few kids, I think it's well money, money well spent. I just hate to see us just say, well, maybe somebody else will pick it up.
I just don't believe it's county's responsibility, so.
Our kids are all our responsibilities.
Well, and you spent some time observing that, and I think in our conversations, you alluded to not necessarily knowing the, I mean, all these diversions are good if they're indeed true diversions from ending up in your facility, but you spent some time and effort and studying that and having conversations with those folks and observing teen court, is that right?
Yeah, I, they're, the whole rate of, of the, the crime, they're not serious crimes, they're small misdemeanors, they're, you know, getting caught stealing a hat from Shields, they're, you know, they're getting in a fight at school, they're, and it was a successful program on that scale, but when you look at, I just think when you look at the county as a whole, it's not kids that were going to detention center, it's not, you know, it may help these kids at a lower level, but it's not, the grasp, I don't think, is big enough for the county to be spending its tax dollars, my tax dollars, on it.
We live in Hampton.
Several rental properties in-
Okay. I was just, but I, again, I just, I hate to see us throw out what I still consider to be a success story, and my whole goal, every time I've looked at the teen court, was hopefully at that age 18, they won't show up in Sioux City lockup somewhere.
That's the whole goal of it.
Any other questions?
Who will, and knowing that Woodbury County is the only one in the state of Iowa, and I always, you know, you're either doing something incredibly right that 98 other counties aren't, or you're not, so who will pick up, since I guess we're the only one? And, and just so the good of the public understands, we once had a teen court coordinator position. We once had a mental health coordinator position. We once had a first T, also a diversionary golf program. So there's been a, a history toward the other end of the pendulum, also some other funding for diversionary programs and so on. So who will do the mental health coordination like the other 98 counties do? Who will pick that up, essentially?
Run like the adult court system, they go through the clerk of courts, and then liaison through the, the child to be the, you know, their appointed attorney. So it'll run just as if all the rest of it was done. The problem with these is, when I talked to the courts about it, they said, well, we might go a month with never having a committal. Well, we have a full-time person staff that maybe we'll have, and we're just adding, we're adding duties and adding duties to keep a, a position, and I just, I think it's time to cut the cord and let it function.
I just wanted to make sure that was stated, because all of these are noble endeavors, but to have a full-time FTE running mental health committals when sometimes there's a month going, or a full-time position to run teen court, or a full-time position to run first T, I think that's where we're looking to be more lean and efficient as a county's. That would be my take.
Any other questions for Ryan?
I appreciate the plan, and I'll be supporting it.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Item F, Board of Supervisors, Approval of Emergency Services Paramedics with Funding Mr. Taylor, would you like to?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So the executive summary, and I won't read all of this, but first off, I want to commend the various emergency services personnel, volunteers, EMS association, mayors, city councils, township trustees, our auditor, all the various entities. I think the proposal that you have before you is the win-win-win, win for all involved. It's a win for taxpayers, because we will not have to increase the levy at all in order to pay for these positions. It's a win for the volunteer responders and for emergency services, who helps to cover more than 870 square miles, and then it's a win for county residents, who will undoubtedly be helped by the, the services. So there have been four funding proposals. Each has their merits. I think the one that we heard last week, leveraging on a per capita basis and then trying to exempt a city, I don't think is ideal. So again, and again, I'll reiterate, this does not increase taxes by a penny, but adds two and a quarter paramedics and gives a total of three and a quarter paramedics, and the fact that we already employ one. And what we're essentially doing is looking at the positions that we've been able to reduce, such as the assistant HR director, if I can use that term, or the deauthorization of Melissa Thomas's position, the potential deauthorization that I believe that it sounds like the board will support from juvenile detention. You have a reorganization idea later on in this agenda as well, and I think that that's going to actually far exceed what we will be spending here. The other thing that is important in this is that this is an equal share between the general fund and rural basic, which I think is important, because I think both those in our, in our incorporated areas, as well as in our unincorporated areas, benefit from this. And I think the, the same is true whether you live in Sioux City and travel to eat out at a restaurant, in Anthem, or go to the fair, or you're going down 29 and you're out in Sloan when something happens. So I think that this is a, a very, very fair way to do it. It's fair for taxpayers. There's no net increase. You have 146,267 dollars for the two new paramedics, and then it would require division of three paramedics into general, basic, and rural basic at one and a half FTEs funded per piece. There's also a stipulation here that would allow emergency services director to take a quarter-time position and authorize a paramedic quarter-time position. So those are my opening comments on the proposal.
Couple of questions. The quarter-time position to be reutilized, is, any more details on that?
It's currently being filled by an EMT, and his, his employee's name is Anthony Gall, and I spoke with him late last year, early this year, when we started down this road of trying to get ALS on our staff. He is more than willing to resign from his position and allow that position, those funding dollars to be reutilized, so, been very cooperative. He's probably, all indications are he'll stay on as a volunteer with the department, so.
Okay. And then question for you, Mr. Taylor. You note not to mention one other position that could be realized through another department. Are you comfortable saying what that is, or?
No, not at this time, because there's- No, not at this time, because there's, I think that elected official is looking at that potential, may or may not be there. And so one of the things that I don't necessarily want to do is float that out if that's not going to be, and then you go through the whole bumping thing and someone finds out, it could be two or three weeks of heartburn for no reason. And I think the amount that we will have reduced already will have exceeded what we're doing.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
But Dennis, you can confirm there is a position out there, so you can confirm I'm not making it up?
Yeah. Two things. One, as I understand from Gary now, that 2,500's position is not a paramedic, but he is going to resign, and you're going to deauthorize that position.
We're going to, he's going to resign, and we're going to use that as the quarter-time paramedic position. We're going to rehire in that position, hopefully we can hire a quarter-time.
So then if he's going to be a paramedic, he should be transferred over to this emergency paramedic services if it's going to be a paramedic?
Yes, it'll be a paramedic.
Okay. So that's, what we have budgeted now, right now, is $10,000 for, for that position. So what I'm hearing is that'll add to our cost here a little bit, because he's going to be a paramedic, not an EMT. They want to put all the paramedics together. The second, go ahead.
Before we get to that, what, what would be the funding difference on a quarter-time position?
It's about $12,000 a year.
Between the EMT and the paramedic?
All right, the difference?
Right. Because I don't think we're talking a whole heck of.
$10,000, a few odd dollars according to payroll.
For?
His benefits, yes.
The difference between a quarter-time EMT and a quarter-time paramedic?
We.
No, he's just, he's taking that position, say it's $10,000.
Okay.
Taking that, eliminating that position, he's going to hire a paramedic for whatever he gets for a quarter, $10,000. But that isn't added into these numbers here, the $10,000, which I discovered, you know, today.
I think the question is, what's the cost difference between an EMT and a paramedic?
Correct.
We have asked the board in our improvement plan request, and we had it on the agenda, I wasn't prepared to manage that, because I wasn't aware it was on the agenda. There's about $19,000 that's in an improvement request to make some salary adjustments, to get some distance between the EMTs and the paramedics because of their education and their skillsets. And I talked to Mr. DeWitt about that late last week. We need a little time to shake this out, to see what, we're doing a salary comparison right now with Sioux City, Suluon Paramedic South, to the different services around us that use like employees. And we're pulling that data together now. So what we're hoping to do is just be able to set that improvement request, fund it, set it aside with no action can be taken on it without board authorization, give us a chance to do the salary study, come back and have a comprehensive plan of what the difference in salaries is.
A salaried paramedic and a salaried EMT, what's the difference pay-wise? Nothing? Is that?
Currently.
Currently.
And the other individuals that we work for here are the same.
Okay. So there may be a tiny bump.
Right.
But is that, to me, it's small potatoes in comparison to the 146,000. I mean, we could be talking about five, right, or something like, or not, not even that. So I just, I don't want to get too, too wrapped around an answer or end.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
You're not opposed to having a paramedic making more than an EMT, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right. That's where, I think we need to be, I need to be, I think there needs to be some daylight between paramedics and EMTs.
Yep, and absolutely. So the quarter-time for a quarter-time, I would assume that there'd be a little, a little bump. But I just want to make sure in the light of the entire, just all of the proposal, that it's not, you know.
I really don't want to give a dollar number right now until we get through the salary comparison. And I don't want to skew my ability to, to do a comprehensive salary comparison by already stating some number in public.
Yep. Gotcha.
We're pulling together a lot of data, and it's, and it's going well. It's just that I need, I need to understand better what tasks these people are doing for the other employers.
So remind me, you've got that 19,000 there?
The 19,000 is not there. It's, it hasn't been acted on by this board for next year's budget.
Okay, that's right.
It was, at the time of my operating budget, and I asked that it not be acted on that date, because I wasn't prepared. And what I'm asking is if, that needs to be put back on the agenda and acted on, if it could just be set there with no action can be taken on it until I bring a comprehensive salary survey back to the board and the board acts on it. I wouldn't have the latitude to do it myself. It would take board action.
Sounds familiar.
Yes, sir. So this would be half-funded, general fund is everybody in the county.
Correct, county-wide.
And then the rural basic is all in the non-incorporated area.
Correct. Now, there's one more thing I'd like to add, too, that through the process, I did budget $121,861 for rural basic under Plan Number One. So with Plan Number Five here, actually we'll be saving $5,103 in rural basic, because we're actually going to be living less than what we originally intended to under Plan One, because that's the only plan we had at the moment to budget.
But it's almost, it's so close that it's within a margin of 2% or 3%, right? I mean, it's not like all of a sudden they're not paying anything out in rural basic, or they're paying all of it.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not even close to Plan Eight yet, like I said last week.
We're hoping it's the last one.
That's probably the last one.
I think what allows us to do, and talking to Mr. Taylor, Mr. DeWitt, these are new employees that are coming on. They won't earn as much sick time and as vacation time in the first year or two as what somebody that's been on 10 years earns. We can do with a lesser position, a less number of hours in order to cover their days off, their time off, their mandatory time off. And then we've also been in conversation with some of the other paramedic providers in the region, that we can coordinate so they know that on a specific day, if I'm going to run short, what that day is and what hours that's going to take place in. So we can coordinate some coverage. So say if I've got, I'm short on hours and I'm not going to have a paramedic on to make a night date in the morning, I can plan that out ahead of time and let Sioux City know, let Sergeant Bluff know, let Cherokee, you know, purchase know that those are the hours that we're going to be offline. And then we would want them to do the same with us, probably not so much Sioux City, but the smaller services that we work with. They're going to have paramedics available, we'd like to know them, and if they're not going to, it would be helpful if we knew. And it gives us the ability to better triage these calls. If my guys in the front seat of the truck knew they were going to a call, it sounds like it needs a paramedic, and another paramedic call comes in, they would have a better ability to say, hey, see, get Sergeant Bluff on hook, see if they can deploy their paramedic. We know that Salix's guy is home tonight, can we deploy him? So get a little more comprehensive strategy going on regionwide throughout our area, rather than just doing it on the fly. Get a little more, a little more structure.
But you've got a feel for other entities wanting to work together, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The reason we haven't been able to have those kind of conversations is we had nothing to offer. You know, we had daytime paramedic seven to seven. I can't say nothing. We have a daytime paramedic, a very good one, seven to seven, so.
But you said working with other agencies excluding Sioux City, do you see any problem with them?
No, no, we, we work well with Sioux City. Matter of fact, Tom Everett and I talk on a regular basis. We've been talking since the paramedics made their announcement, and they're willing to help us, but they want us to be able to help ourselves first. Mr. Winkles has been in several conversations with the chief and the mayor about that, and you know, they're willing to help us, but we have to be able to help ourselves first. They're not going to just become the go-to guy for the county. But I think we can work on a, together as a group, we've got an active group working together already, and we can come up with some good strategies to share with each other what we can do.
I think we've all seen where we can plan until the cows come home, but when things really get bad, there's no shortage of people to help, is there?
No. And that's one of the commitments through this whole thing, that everybody throughout the entire region has said, you know, we're trying to take care of what our daily needs are, but if bad things happen and you need us, count on us, we're coming. And, and that's been the position of Woodbury County as well, throughout my, my career with them, is that we will go help our neighbors, whether it's the sheriff's department with a canine, a SWAT team, or emergency services, or water rescue, or whatever the case may be, we go help each other, so. The only other thing I'd like to add is personal thank you to the, or to, to HR and to juvenile detention for them being willing to see the need and reorganize and make funding available to help us out. That's, that says, I think that says a tremendous amount for the caliber the department has to discount these employees. And I appreciate all the board. I know we've been down a long road on this, and it has been pleasant from time to time, but I appreciate you not letting go of the need and understanding and respecting that this is a, this is an issue that really matters to the health and safety of the people in the county. And I appreciate the board sticking with me and sticking with the responders and the mayors to, to make this happen, if, and hoping it happens, so.
Any other questions or comments for Gary?
I would like to thank everyone for working together and coming up with solutions. I know, maybe what, been three months of working out different solutions and problems, and I think this is the best way to go. And I figured it'd probably be about budget time by the time we had something ready. So I'm glad to see us move forward with something where.
And these positions will come online July 1st. We will do everything we can, working with HR to move the hiring process, like we did when we hired Jerry. We'll have everything done, interviews done, and then the dollars become available on July 1st, and that's when we plan to put these people on the truck, so.
If I can make one last comment?
I would like to say one more thing before, so there's no confusion. As painful as this is, this does not put any paramedics on the street or in climbing hill prior to. This is a long-term solution, nothing that, that lands between now and July 1st. And I know that, that's an unpopular thing to say, so I'll say it, but that's kind of the reality of where we are. Mr. Taylor?
And with that, we would also look to you and to others, and to mayors and so on. There's been a lot of information that has been alarming and caused for concern, or maybe rightly so, with the loss of SPI. But conversely, we hope that there's that equal commitment to educating and letting people know that, lack of a better term, help is on the way, or that this board, I think, is about to take action so that that plan is in place and that there's a level of comfortability, too. So hopeful moving forward and.
We will be sending out an email to everybody in the morning, so.
With that, I would, I would move approval of the addition of one and a half paramedics from the rural basic fund, and a half paramedic from general basic, and authorize emergency services director Gary Brown to reutilize a quarter-time position for a quarter-time paramedic.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Do we have any other public input, please?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Auditor, and Mr. CFO, I'm, I'm for everybody. I'm here to do a couple of things. I'm here to speak in support of this proposal, and I'm also here to thank quite a few people, because there's been a lot going on behind the scenes and people I need to thank. And also to assure you what's going to happen in the next five months by telling the story of a call that Sergeant Bluff took four days ago, and we were up on the county border, four miles north of Mowville. So I'm going to start with by saying, everything I tell you, the sheriff had to go do other things, but he has authorized what I'm going to tell you from the sheriff's perspective, and he totally supports his plan. And the reason he supports his plan, he's one of the reasons I've been so active working behind the scenes with Rocky and others, because we, I do a lot of the EMS stuff for the sheriff's department as an advanced tactical medic, and go on calls and everything. So we had a big concern that the deputies were going to have a lot tougher time mentally, being on scene as a first responder on an ALS call, and nobody coming for an extended period of time, half hour, 45 minutes, whatever. And they have minimal training. And so we thought that would be very hard on them. So we decided that we had a vested interest in this issue. And this deals with that, a big part of that. And so from the sheriff's perspective and, and my perspective, as the mayor Sergeant Bluff, we totally support it. Also, shifting gear to thank people for this, it starts with a meeting I held with the mayors in Mowville, probably two and a half, three months ago. And we were all kind of freaking out, didn't know where this would end up. It was a big change. And so as it progressed, I would say, I probably could have done a little better job communicating with the mayors, but every key proposal, everything like that I sent to the mayors, I talked to the ones, it's hard to get a hold of a lot of them. They meet once a week, or some once a month. So it's kind of hard to get a hold of them. But I think I did an adequate job of keeping them in the loop. And I kind of felt like the mayors could be, like I help my EMS director and my fire chief a lot. And I'm assuming most mayors do, because they're very important in small towns. So I thought we could come alongside, in this case, our EMS first responders and be supportive of them in dealing with you guys. So I'll, I'll start my thanks in this room, and Rocky kind of got dumped into the, short notice to the chairmanship, not dumped in so much. And so he'd asked me to kind of help with this issue, which is what I was doing. And I want to thank several people that most of you don't know, came forward and helped with proposals that were out there that have kind of been reviewed thoroughly vetted, I would say, to arrive where we're at now with a plan that we really like. I want to thank the CEO of Mercy Hospital, who stepped up and was willing to give us a proposal. We had some general numbers worked out, but again, would have been tax increase. But still, they stepped up and they said that they were willing to work with us. So we appreciate that very much. Tom Everett at Sioux City Fire, which is also Sioux City EMS, and Bob Scott, both met with us on more than one occasion, and we had a proposal there that could have worked if all else failed. So I appreciate that very much. Pat Gill and Dennis Butler, I know we caused a lot of extra work for them in this process. Don't laugh, Pat. But we did, seriously, because they were crunching numbers all the time on these other proposals, too, good, bad, indifferent. So we appreciate all that, you know, more than you guys probably would know unless somebody said it to you guys. So thank you both very much. Also, she'd come running in with facts and figures in our meetings and have a book written, you know, right on. So that was very positive. So we appreciate all that effort. And then, to each of you as supervisors, I think we've shown in this process, with a little time and effort, we can work out the most difficult of situations in concert with you guys. So we appreciate all of you giving us the time to do that. And the last thing I'm going to talk about, if I still have a minute, is a call we had a few days ago. We were called north of Mowville, which is right on the border. We're as far from Sergeant Bluff basically as we can get, pretty much, as you can get still be in the county. We had our tower, which some people don't believe in taking their towers out in the rural, goes up 104 feet. The call was for a distressed individual high up on a silo, potentially, okay, I'll just leave it at that. And so our tower, the silo is 90 feet tall, so our tower could go all the way up. Took our heavy rescue up there, did an effect rope rescue and aid Mowville in any way we could. On that call, for one, one patient, the outcome was good, by the way. Six hours later, I was one of the guys up there, and seven other people from Sergeant Bluff Fire and Rescue were up there, including a tactical medic, which is me, a paramedic, and an advanced EMT from Sergeant Bluff. So we were up there for six hours on the very edge of the county. Very significant thing here. Another one of our paramedics was working in Sioux City at the time. So we actually had to have the comm center get a hold of Sioux City Fire ambulance and put them on standby for us, so they would have gone into Sergeant Bluff, because we're way up there out of position with our medics, okay? And I can't strand my own community. I could resign as mayor, maybe, then, but you know what I'm saying? That's a critical thing that we have. So again, we totally support this program that's come up now. come up now with no tax increases. We're grateful for that. We will be doing, everybody in the county, not just Sergeant Bluff, in the next five months, will be coordinating with Gary, and we will be doing just what we did up north of Mowville on the Woodbury County line. So we will do everything we can to ease the situation in the next five months. It's not your fault, it's not our fault. We're in this boat. But we're in this boat. So thanks for all your time, thanks for your patience. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might, not that you can't get up there, but I would like to thank all the board members, myself, Mayor Winkle. I received, I won't say countless, but I got a lot of phone calls from EMS, the small towns, Sheriff's Office staff, and I know that Mr. Winkle was working countless hours, truly countless hours, behind the scenes trying to get something viable put together. We appreciate your support of this plan. And like Marty says, I would hate to get to Plan Eight and still not have anything ironed out, but, but to your point, we didn't have to, as Gary alluded, we don't have an action plan in place, but yet here Sergeant Bluff stepping up, and I'd bet almost anything that there are several other entities up there on the scene as well.
And every other town would do the same.
And granted, exactly. So not that we don't need an emergency plan or some kind of an action plan, we do. But again, thanks to all those involved, I might be putting the cart in front of the horse, but I think this is an awesome plan. And I think we have some, we have a long-term solution with this, in the hopes that the short-term solution up to and including July 1st will be also addressed by other entities out there. So... Marty?
I want to say one thing. When this all started, I said I really wish the state had made EMS mandatory. And I think someday they will. And when we first started this, I said, well, let's just do it and let Dennis figure out how to fund it. But I think this one of those where Woodbury County can be ahead of everybody else. Say, hey. And truthfully, whether I like this plan or one of the other plans, or Plan Eight, I'm not that particular. I just want to get it done. I want to have the EMS countywide. I've worked, you know, my years on the PD, I know how well the agencies can work together. I have no fear of that working. I'm just happy to see us get it done. And if and when the day comes when they make it mandatory, we can say, that's fine, we already got it.
I'd also like to thank Pat, putting on a town home meeting, Michelle, and enough can't be said about Danny. He's been doing a lot of, heavy lifting on a lot of issues recently, so we appreciate him more than he'll ever know. The issue with the state, we do have, we are working currently with Senator Jack Gaines. And he has some of our talking points already up in the Legislative Services Bureau being drafted. I plan to be in Des Moines, February 8th and 9th with the I O EMS Association, some legislating meeting and lobbying day. I've been in contact with their president and their lobbyists. So hopefully, we're going to have some legislation that we can at least take a poke at for this year. So the only, last thing I have is that improvement request. We need to put that back on the agenda for next week for the action on it, because we never took action on my improvement request. I just don't want it to drop through the cracks.
Haven't we historically done that toward the end, or is that, I mean, we'll need to pick it up at some point again, but...
Like budget review?
You'll let me know then.
It'll be on budget review, right?
Yeah. Because we want to really have a comprehensive package that makes sense when we bring it to you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gill, we have a motion and a second, correct?
That's correct.
And do we have any other comments or questions on the item? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. We have a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While everyone is saying thank you, I want to thank John for tying those ropes right when I rappelled down the building.
We're going to take about a four-minute recess and then restart the meeting at 4:30, please.
Good job.
Good job.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sir. Yeah, thank you.
You got there.
That's, I wasn't sure if it was here for that, or...
Well, there's a, there's a quorum in the bathroom.
There were two.
Yeah.
Farmers and...
Now, that can be the situation. I think I'll break down and cry, because it'll be, Dick Owens is contacted and double ACP and the ACLU. Thank you. Yeah. That can be the situation someday in Rolling Hills. I think I'll break down and cry. It's been a long road.
Well, yeah, your, your road on that deal has been nightmarish. It makes this blizzard of 18 look, look paltry, but I'm just saying, I'm so, I always question where we're going to get the paramedics, but that's Gary's problem.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jeff.
Well, I couldn't let Drew not get reduced at all. I mean, come on.
What'd you get, 2500?
Yeah.
Well, we all left much.
Yeah.
This is not Dave Drew. Well, good job, Mr. Taylor.
Thanks. Me, too.
That was you, not me.
Well, almost that. I didn't know who was going to stand up last and say, this all started when I was six years old and had a dream.
There are my men.
Farmers and Garrettson.
Farmer's and Garrettson.
You should come up, Michelle.
Yeah.
We're done with that.
Did you ever want to check it out?
Yes.
Words in the English language. We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Welcome to the board meeting. Please silence your phones, pagers and other devices if you have them. Mr. Gill, would you remind me of the canvas you want to get? Let's get that done right away, please.
Michelle, we have two Drainage District elections to certify. You are the canvassers for that. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, because it's ministerial. You received the information this morning. It's the Garrettson and Farmers Drainage District. Michelle, who are the winners?
So we received the results from the Garrettson and Farmers Drainage District. There was election on the 20th, first for Garrettson, for the office of Garrettson Drainage District Trustee for Sub District Number Two. There were a total of 1,477 ballots cast. Results received 197 votes for Ron Wood, and John Winkle received 1,280 votes. Therefore, John Winkle is declared duly elected to the office of Garrettson Drainage District Trustee for Sub District Number Two for a term of three years.
We need a motion to receive for signatures.
I'll make the motion to receive.
Second.
Motion by Duett, second by Ung, to receive.
The Garrettson.
The Garrettson Drainage.
Right.
Canvas.
And there's two abstracts that you need to sign, and then the chair and commissioner of elections will need to sign the certificate.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Mr. Gill?
The second election was for Farmers Drainage District for Sub District Number Two, and that was also held on the 20th of January. There were 3,343 ballots cast. Todd Rand received a total of 3,343 votes, and there were no write-ins. Therefore, Todd Rand should be declared duly elected to the office of Farmers Drainage District Trustee for Sub District Number Two for a term of three years.
We need a motion to receive.
I will make a motion to receive.
Second.
Questions, comments?
You have like North Korea percentages on that election.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. All right. Do we have any citizens' concerns before we proceed?
Any North Koreans offended by Supervisor Raddig's remarks?
Sadly, they probably don't have the electricity or internet to see them.
From bad to worse.
You think they don't have YouTube over there? I think you exceeded your limit today, Mr. Raddig. Hearing that, I'll move approval of the agenda.
I will second that. Questions or concerns? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Consent agenda. Items five through 10 constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item five, approval of the minutes of the January 16, 2018 meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just to poke a little good fun at my friend Pat Gill, on number seven, I know you're a good Democrat, but I believe it's the Health and Wellness Committee, not the Health and Welfare.
Whatever.
He's the only supervisor who reads the minutes.
Item six is approval of claims. Item seven, human resources approval, A is approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, B, approval of authorization to initiate hiring processing. Eight, board administration, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending 002, also known as 3320 Parkland Place, setting for Tuesday, February 6th at 4:35. Item B, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in 003, also known as 2917th Street, setting for Tuesday, February 6th at 4:37. County Auditor, receive auditor's quarterly report is number nine. Number 10, secondary roads, consideration of a permit for use of the county right-of-way for an underground utility. I will entertain a...
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay. I will second that. Motion by Raddig, aside from Mr. Ung's clarification. Do we have a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Consent agenda passes. Number 11, Ninth District Vice Commander for the American Legion, approval and presentation of proclamation to officially recognize the Woodbury County Freedom Rock in Anthem, Anthem, Iowa.
Afternoon, gentlemen.
Sure.
On behalf of the American Legion, Ninth District, appreciate the opportunity to come and speak and make this presentation. I presume that you all have copies of the proposed proclamation that was cut out. And I guess our question would be, do you have any, any questions about it or anything that you don't like about it?
Would the board like me to read this?
Yes, please.
Woodbury County Freedom Rock Proclamation, to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of those citizens who have and those who continue to serve in all branches of the Armed Forces of the United States and the U.S. Public Health Service, here and after known as the Uniformed Services, while protecting our freedom and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, Mr. Ray Sorenson was inspired by the motion picture Saving Private Ryan to create works of art on stone in all 99 counties in Iowa as a lasting tribute to the men and women who have preserved and protected the ideals set forth in the U.S. Constitution for over 242 years. And whereas, these works of art are supported by the communities and counties in which they are located. And whereas, the community of Anthem has come forward in support of Mr. Sorenson's vision for Freedom Rock, representative of the service and sacrifices of Woodbury County residents involved in global peacekeeping. And whereas, the community of Anthem has caused a large stone to be designated as the Woodbury County Freedom Rock, and has caused it to be located in Anthem, Iowa. And whereas, the community of Anthem has committed to the expenditure of considerable time and expense in support of the Woodbury County Freedom Rock. And whereas, the Woodbury County Freedom Rock is in...
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay. I will second that. Motion by Raddig, aside from Mr. Ung's clarification. Do we have a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Consent agenda passes. Number 11, Ninth District Vice Commander for the American Legion, approval and presentation of proclamation to officially recognize the Woodbury County Freedom Rock in Anthem, Iowa.
Afternoon, gentlemen.
Sure.
On behalf of the American Legion, Ninth District, appreciate the opportunity to come and speak and make this presentation. I presume that you all have copies of the proposed proclamation that was cut out, and I guess our question would be, do you have any questions about it or anything that you don't like about it?
Would the board like me to read this?
Yes, please.
Woodbury County Freedom Rock Proclamation to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of those citizens who have and those who continue to serve in all branches of the armed forces of the United States and the U.S. Public Health Service, here and after known as the Uniformed Services, while protecting our freedom and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, Mr. Ray Sorensen was inspired by the motion picture Saving Private Ryan to create works of art on stone in all 99 counties in Iowa as a lasting tribute to the men and women who have preserved and protected the ideals set forth in the U.S. Constitution for over 242 years, and whereas these works of art are supported by the communities and counties in which they are located, and whereas the community of Anthem has come forward in support of Mr. Sorensen's vision for Freedom Rock representative of the service and sacrifices of Woodbury County residents involved in global peacekeeping, and whereas the community of Anthem has caused a large stone to be designated as the Woodbury County Freedom Rock and has caused it to be located in Anthem, Iowa, and whereas the community of Anthem has committed to the expenditure of considerable time and expense in support of the Woodbury County Freedom Rock, and whereas the Woodbury County Freedom Rock is an impressive and positive piece of art, which along with other attractions in the county, will contribute to the overall increase of tourism in northwest Iowa and Woodbury County specifically. Therefore, be it resolved that the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors formally recognizes the Woodbury County Freedom Rock located in Anthem, Iowa, as a significant piece of art and part of Mr. Ray Sorensen's 99-county commemorative vision, and be it further resolved that the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors publicly salutes the efforts of Mr. Sorensen and the citizens of Anthem in the improvement and betterment of Woodbury County, and that August 19th of each year will be designated as Woodbury County Freedom Rock Day.
I'll move the proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by Ung, to accept the resolution. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Item 12, Building Services, Mr. Kenny Schmitz.
Hello. The item before you is an action item for the reorganization of the Building Services Department. Previously, the board authorized a Building Services Project Energy and Construction Manager position that we did receive applications on. I believe there were five or six applications. Not all of the applicants or all of the applicants did not fully meet the qualifications of that job scope. I had conducted the interview process, interviewed a couple of the candidates. Each one of the candidates voiced concerns of the possibility of the project or the position lasting over three years with the county. They were concerned that the longevity of that position probably wouldn't give them a position long-term that they would seek. So that was one of the problems with the position. Then on January 13th, the board decided to further table the Law Enforcement Center expansion and the C1 and C2 projects that would have been associated with it. Those projects altogether would have been over $3 million. So with that said and taking into consideration all of the information I had at the time, I thought it was best to try to reorganize the department in a manner in which would take care of the department's needs and still try to meet the county's goals going forward. And so I'm before you today requesting the authorization of a Building Services Environmental Project and Energy Management Supervisor. The current calculations for that, of the two position reductions that were already authorized, we have $109,958 in reductions. The estimated costs for the new position are at $71,000. When I say estimated, that is with a position-based salary of $56,000 and $15,000 estimated in benefits. It's difficult to know what that actual benefit number would be, but I believe that would be close to accurate. With that all told, the annual department's savings would be $38,958. So I stand before you requesting a motion to approve the Building Services Environmental Project and Energy Management Supervisor position, and will try to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by Ung, any questions for Kenny? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero. Item C, receive and consider bids for project LB L177 and LB 787397.
Ben's passing around bid tabs, but it doesn't look like he's going to have a lot to tabulate. Unfortunately, we just have one bidder. Bid is from Dixon Construction Company, Creteville, Iowa. For the bridge, there's two bridges. Each of them have separate proposals. Bid bond is included. For bridge L77, total bid price $222,321.80. For bridge number L78, these are both on the same road. They're on 200th Street between Union and Taylor Avenues, if memory serves me. Or is it Union and County Line Road?
County Line.
Okay. Total bid price $225,543.58.
Fair amount of discrepancy.
Well, when we do estimates, we base them on what we paid for prior bridges. It's, we've seen a lot of fluctuation in cost depending on how much work contractors already have under contract or ready to bid. The prices we had here were based on our projects last fall, and, you know, at that point in time, we were catching guys looking to fill their year, and we got some very good bids at that point in time. I was just glancing at the unit prices here. I would like to have the opportunity to check the bids since I did note that the bidder did make one scratch out here. I just want to make sure his math is correct and we awarded the proper price, but there's nothing irregular with those bids. We'll come back with a recommendation next week.
Okay.
Recommend you receive the bids and allow the county engineer to examine them for recommendation on the board.
I'll move to receive.
Motion by Raddig, second by Duett, to receive and consider bids for item 13C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14 was redirected to earlier in the meeting. Do we have reports on committee meetings?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Taylor?
I just wanted to update the board on the historic committee, and we had a meeting last Tuesday in which I think we are starting to hone in on some of the scheduled activities for the day, days, I should say, to the level where we're getting to where we may potentially have an 11:00 a.m. Board of Supervisors meeting with the proclamation, the time capsule, a lunch and learn that first day, I'm talking May 1st, as well as Law Day, and Lisa McNeil and Judge Walsh are coming forward with some exciting activities that day as well. So we're starting to flesh out those ideas and really putting pen to paper. We're receiving some donations and appreciative to our Assistant County Attorney for providing some guidance, which I shared with the committee, on how those can be solicited. And so I'll be putting a copy of the minutes as well as some notes in each of your tills just to update you, and be long in the tooth if I shared more than that, but I think there's, it's going to be exciting. It's going to be here around the corner, really. May 1st is not that far away, so here we go.
Any other?
I attended the governor's address with the chamber. There was a lot of talk about workforce as usual, a lot of commendations for AGP, Seaboard Triumph, mention of the very low unemployment percentage of 2.9%. Some question and answer at the end. The biggest question from the stakeholders in the room was the one-cent sales tax for school infrastructure. There was no definitive on that, so kind of hard to gauge where that support may be. But then, of course, the priorities of water quality was brought up, and less on mental health than I anticipated would be brought up, but that's just a hairy subject.
Anybody else? Hearing no more reports on committee meetings, do we have any other citizen concerns? I'll take that as a no. Do we have any board concerns, number 17? We're adjourned.